Audio. And we're gonna do this. Oh, and then we're gonna do this. And then we're gonna say, huh 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 huh. Uh oh, uh oh. Two people. I'm gonna do this. Two people are waiting. Oh my God. Look at that. Everybody's waiting. Just so you all know. That's what I'm talking about right there.
Well, someone has to have like it, you know?
Well, well, here's the deal. After I left school. They did this.
Oh, there you go. Yep, I get you.
I know you're getting me. So I had this T-shirt made up and of course it, it's got my name on it. Right? That was my, that was my number playing football. Sixty-four. But I played, I played for the Red Raiders. And I'm not understanding why. You have, it, it had to be so, um.
Uh, before we start, we want to make sure we get to.
August eighteenth.
Room for improvement.
You wanna read tonight or you want me to read tonight, Bruce? Well, I don't have it printed out tonight, so I'm sorry to tell you, I'd like you to read it. Sir, you can make any edits you'd like. Notice is hereby given in accordance with N H R S A. Six, seven, six, semicolon, five, and six, seven, six, semicolon, seven. In the governor's emergency order number twenty-three. That the Milton Planning Board will hold their regularly scheduled meeting on August eighteenth at six thirty remotely using the Zoom web-based platform. Where members will not physically be, not physically present at one meeting location. All discussion will be discernible for citizens viewing the meeting through the Zoom services. Additionally, citizens will not have access to town halls as currently calls to the public for meetings. If citizens have input from the board, please submit via email to Bruce Woodruff. Townplanner at. Band, Bandovian, B A N D U V I A N at M at. M S dot com at any time prior to the meeting and during the times through the end of the public comment portion of the hearing or citizens' input. Emails will be read into the recording during the public comment, comment portion of the Zoom meeting platform. Citizens and Melas will call into the meeting via six, four, six, five, eight, 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 six, five, six, or. Three, oh, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two. If you have no computer, laptop, tablet, smartphone, or broadband access. You will have to enter the meeting ID and password below. Please listen to Zoom meetings to a certain, a certain, certain time when you raise your hand to speak. When you wish to speak, press star nine on the phone to raise your hand in the meeting. If there's a major problem with hearing the meeting, please call six, oh, three, seven, six, seven, three, two, eight, seven. To join the live meeting on Tuesday, August tw- eighteenth, twenty twenty, go to the link shown below. I'm not going to read that. No, it, it was posted, so we're all set. And the meeting ID is eight, two, four, seven, four, one, zero, six, oh, three, two. Passcode is seven, eight, seven, nine, oh, eight. Okay. Onto roll call. We have Lynette.
Lynette McDougal here.
Joe Micho.
Micho here.
Bob Graham.
Bob Graham here.
John Newt. Jonathan Newt.
I thought I heard him.
No audio. Larry Brown.
Larry Brown here.
Who was six, six, oh, three? Seven, eight, seven.
I think Matt.
Is that you, Matt?
No.
No?
I'm here, but that's not me. I don't know who that other number is.
Oh.
Okay, but Matt, Matt is here.
Yep, yep. Matt is here.
And I believe the other number is Larry Brown.
Yes.
And I believe your chairman has frozen up.
Oh.
All right, I hate to, I hate to tell you this. This is probably one of the reasons why we need to go back to physical meetings as soon as we can. Uh. Let's give Brian a chance.
There he is.
Are you back, Brian?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh. No public comment, closed public comment and want to the meeting, meeting August. Yeah, there's no public comment on emails or my phone number, Mr. Chairman.
I would make a public comment. May the, may the board members make public comments?
Go for it, Larry.
That, um, um, Foster's of, uh, uh, eight, seventeen, twenty, page A six. Uh, not everyone may know. Uh, Scott Atlas, uh, is, uh, the new pandemic advisor. Former chief of neuro radiology at Stanford University Medical Center. No expertise in public health or infectious diseases. Makes sense to me.
Okay. Okay. And. Let's see, review all of minutes of August fourth meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Larry Brown, aye.
Bob Graham, aye.
Lynette McDougal, aye.
Joe Micho abstain.
That more abstain.
What you got, Matt?
I abstain.
Jonathan Newt approves. So we. We got four that approve, five that approve. That passes. We have an application in front of us for shoreline protection. It's just an application at this point. It's up on Saint James Ave. Uh, the whole thing, if you want to see it, is at the town office. Basically, what it is, is a teardown of an old camp, uh, with foundation, and they want to remove it. Build a new house and remove the two sheds and put in. A fourteen by forty-four garage and breezeway to the house. They're wait, they're. Got a state-approved septic system. And it's just, it's an application to us and we share it with the Conservation Commission. It's put out by, uh, Norway Plain. Steve Oles was the engineer on it. This is just, the, the review of this is just, uh, really an informational, uh, item. Uh, for the board. It's just board business and if you have any comments, we can, uh, pass that along.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brown.
Uh, nothing is mentioned about the size of the previous, uh, garage, which I take it is probably, uh, being built on a fourteen-foot-wide, forty-four-foot-long formerly gravel driveway. Um, I presume that the consultant town planner will be making an evaluation of the impact of, um, uh, roof runoff and the need for permeable, uh, surfaces.
Well, I, I think if I, Steve, Steve, uh, Oles is doing the same thing, the state is also checking the impermeable soils.
Right.
If the board, if the board wants me to reach out to, uh, D E S, uh, Shoreland Bureau, I'll do that. What's the board want to do?
Does, does the board want consensus or a formal motion?
I think the consensus would work.
I consent.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Bob Graham, consent.
Oh, consent. Lynette McDougal, consent.
You got it, bro.
That works.
I, I have a copy of that that, uh, Julius has sent me. Uh, so I, I'll reach out to, uh, the, the professional at D E S that's handling that, uh. Get back to the board. Yeah. Okay, capital improvement program discussion with department heads. I got a call from Pat Smith. About twenty-six, twenty-four. Saying he was at town hall waiting for us to show up for the meeting. And I said, it's on Zoom tonight. This will be the, probably the last Zoom meeting we'll have. He said he passed on all his paperwork to Bruce. That's correct. Uh, what I wanna, what I wanna do is share my screen at this point and let you know. Uh, that, uh, Pat and I spoke. Uh, I thought Pat was aware that it was a Zoom meeting, but he said that he could not come. And so, uh, he explained, uh, several things to me. Uh, he's standing by his, uh, his request for, uh, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars here. I assume you can all see the spreadsheet. At a previous meeting, the three hundred is what by consensus the planning board settled on. As, as what you're going to, uh, uh, offer to the board of selectmen as, as your, uh, as your suggestion. He stands by all of these incremental funding amounts, and you can see my cursor going up through here. Uh, the first two obviously, uh, are, uh, continuing, uh, leases or bonds. I believe they're leases each one of these, so.
Right.
He's here, starting with the eighteen hundred and going down all the way through the sixty, fifty. Uh, the, uh, let's see, the excavator, where, where am I here? Hold on. The roll-off truck, seventy-four hundred dollars, uh, comes, is not tax levy money. Uh, that comes out of the capital reserve fund from waste, from, uh, solid waste. Uh, from the fees that they take in. So this stays the same throughout and does not affect the, the taxes. Uh, and, uh, from twenty-five thousand on down to six, sixty-seven, uh, he is asking that you continue. Uh, those incremental amounts, uh, that get us, uh, to purchasing new equipment, uh, after the lifespan of the old equipment is over. For a total of. Right here, from here down to here, for a total of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Which is, uh, uh, less than twenty nineteen, which was approved. Less than, uh, twenty eighteen, uh, but more than twenty seventeen, and obviously not a lot passed in twenty twenty. Uh, and so that's what he's requesting. Uh, you will note. That up here under the Dawson and Silver Street project, which is a possible grant. He's not asking for any money in the upcoming capital year. It's zero right here, but he is asking, uh, for sixty thousand dollars a year after that. That's to put aside for the twenty percent match. Now, I will explain further. The. I have, uh, I have. Added this project to the state ten-year plan consideration. It is not in the ten-year plan yet, but right now, through the Regional Planning Commission, I have. Submitted this project, and so, uh, the project, the total is about one point five million dollars to do it all. And if in a future year, the state says, yes, you're gonna be in the ten-year plan. Yes, you will get eighty percent federal highway funds. The, uh, the amount of money that the town will need to pony up at that future year. Uh, will be, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so, uh, one point five million dollars, twenty percent of that is three hundred thousand dollars. At sixty thousand per year, uh, for. For six years, it should be the three hundred thousand dollars. So this is a, uh, a reasonable request, and this is what Pat would like to do. The alternative to that, Pat says. Is to fund it. Is to fund only part of the project. In other words, do the, do the, uh, Silver Street drainage alone. Uh, and then do the, the sidewalks at a future year, and then do the Dawson Street drainage and do the Dawson Street. Uh, sidewalks, and then finally, to do the area down where around the, where Dawson and Silver come together, down by the park. And to get rid of the big, you know, the, the, the triangle area, which is a no man's land, and to make most of that into parking for the downtown. For the village downtown. That would be another part, so it could be done in parts. But, uh, but he was, is really, uh, requesting the sixty thousand dollars per year starting next year. So really, your, your, your report can talk about whether you believe that's a, a good plan moving forward, but it doesn't affect the budget coming up. So that's, that's his, what he needs to say about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, so if I am following Bruce correctly. Uh, if the, if, if it goes into a ten-year state plan. Uh, we can buy the improvements to our local roads at a state dollar that costs us twenty cents per dollar. If we do it in stages, uh, are you saying that we have to pay one hundred percent of our own money for each of those three parts?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
That's not nice.
No, and the trade-off, as you know, is that we have to wait until, uh, until the ten-year plan says that project's a go now. So we know that it's in the future. We know that it could be, uh, six, uh, to, hold on. It could be six to ten years from now. So there's, so you, you could do part of it yourself, uh, mainly because I, I believe that.
Sorry about that.
There are portions of this project that are needed right now. Uh, especially the drainage, the drainage part of it down Silver Street is absolutely needed right now.
May I ask the second question? If we do one part of it, does the cost of that one completed part serve as our twenty percent match on the entire project?
No. The rules are, the rules are that you don't spend the money in advance and get to claim credit as match for a future project. That, those are the rules.
Yep.
And not my rules, federal highway rules.
There, there is no way to claim the original cost of building the Milton Dam.
Correct. Damn. So I, I think the thing that the board needs to either think about, discuss or think about, and then discuss so that, you know, when we write the report. Is where we are on this project and what, and what you recommend to the board of selectmen. Uh, and then the other part, of course, is you have already decided that three hundred thousand is enough for twenty twenty-one. Uh, there, there is more than anecdotal evidence. Uh, and all you need to do is read the newspaper. That the, 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 the revenue reduction so far is pegged at around ten percent. Across the board in municipalities in New Hampshire. And many municipalities are using that ten percent reduction figure for both their budget and for their capital program. Of that three hundred thousand is an offset from the, uh, state, uh, highway funds, correct? Correct. It's running around, uh, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, uh, in the last few years.
Uh, can we expect that hundred and thirty-four thousand to go down by ten percent?
I don't have the answer to that question right now.
That would be a reasonable assumption, though.
Uh, it could be. Uh, I, but, but we're, it's too soon to know. We don't, we don't have that, we don't have that information from the state yet. And as you know, the state pays those amounts, uh, quarterly. To this, to the town. Any questions more, discussion on Pat's proposal, uh?
Uh, one more, one more question, uh, and that is, does that hundred and thirty-four thousand, a nominal from the state, represent, uh, pass-through shepherded funds from federal highway? Or is it completely, uh, state-generated, uh, money?
Well, there's a, that's, uh, kinda complicated, Larry. Here, here's the answer, as, as I know it. Uh, 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 most of the money, uh, from the, the block, from the highway block grant. Is gas tax money. That. People pay when they buy gas at the pumps. It goes. Right, this is part of the federal excise. It goes right to Washington. And then is allocated back on a formula, uh, that is based mostly on things like, uh, uh, maintenance and winter maintenance, uh, for states in the, in the northern tier. So we, we in New Hampshire get more than a penny back for every penny that we put in. That's a good thing. Uh, but, and, and I'm not sure how that's been run in one point four, one point four pennies per penny. Uh, you could say the same thing for the dollar, too. Uh, and so really, it is federal money that filters back down to the state, and then the state allocates that on a formula. Based upon the number of miles of, of state highway that is in your town. So that's kinda complicated. Uh, and so Milton has been running around a hundred and thirty, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for a number of years. Was I clear on that?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, thank you. Nice pop quiz.
I could've just said, I don't know, but. You did a good job. Well, Ernie is not, I don't think will be here tonight. Yeah, he did tell me earlier, uh, on the phone that he was planning on, uh, joining the Zoom meeting.
Hmm.
However, things, things happen, as you know, and I think Julius, uh, is ready to, uh, explain about the technology project. Sounds good.
But the, uh, before we go to that, um, I did, uh, if you remember the conversation I had with Karen, uh, from two weeks ago. Uh, I did meet with her and go over, you know, a, a template, uh, for getting the total costs for the, her, the, um, uh, boat ramp, uh, and how to plug it in. Uh, and she has been trying to get that, uh, total figure by contacting, uh, uh, New Hampshire, uh, D E, no, Fish and Game and whatever. Uh, and at this point, if I'm not speaking incorrectly for her, um, we had a conversation at the, uh, end of last week. Uh, that she has decided not to follow through on a, um, C I P, a project for the boat ramp this year. Now.
And you know that, and you know that for fact, Larry, yes?
Uh, I, I am, uh, conversationally, one hundred percent sure. Uh, she did not have plans to come back and, uh, to this meeting, uh, tonight. But I, I think she would easily con- uh, confirm that. It was just, uh, with the summer camp program and the uncertainties, um, it's like you, you're, you're swimming as fast as you can to stay, to stay in one place. And not only are you swimming, but the level of the lake is dropping at the same time, so you don't know where you are. So.
Sixteen inches lower than normal.
Yeah.
I was on the lake today, so I know.
This, uh, this is John Newt speaking. Uh, I, I appreciate her desire to do that, but this is an ongoing multi-year project. And we're shooting ourselves in the foot by not putting some money in there to defray this expense in the future. So I, I really object to pulling out the ten thousand, and we can come up with our own number, but I, I just think this is crazy, not to put some money in this capital reserve fund. We've all agreed the boat ranch is essential. Just 'cause she's lost her nerve about funding it, is, is not our concern. We should push ahead with this.
Well, and I agree with that, uh, Jonathan, that, uh, it's up to you. It's up to the planning board. She did submit a, a project submission form for fifteen thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one. And you, you and your report can say, can say one thing or the other. She has decided to pull it, but we are still recommending it. It's what you could do.
I agree.
That. Uh, the, I would, uh, before we go further, uh, she did not lose her nerve. Uh, her conversation, as I remember it, was, uh, that she is also well aware, uh, of the number of unemployed people that she is facing in dealing, uh, with childcare over the summer. Uh, she has already extended the, uh, the summer rec program two weeks for the benefit of parents.
Appreciate your comments, Larry, but, uh, let's, let's get back to the money here. I think we, this committee can put in.
Excuse me, you interrupted me, and I will continue until the end of my statement, which is that she did not pull the plug. She made an assessment that the other costs of this town were more important and fully return, plans to return the next year, sir.
No comment.
Well, and that's for the board to decide, looking at the whole program for twenty twenty-one. Are there things that are more important or less important? And, you know, you know, Larry, you're not looking at the spreadsheet a- as I scroll down through here, but, uh, there are things that, uh, you, you know, you may want to talk about. Whether they are more or less important to the town, you know, right here, here's one. Uh, then, uh, then fifteen thousand dollars added to the already set aside twenty-three thousand dollars for a boat ramp, uh, that doesn't really work very well. On, on our. And I said this before the meeting started, that, uh, our, our lakes and river system here in, in Milton is. An incredible asset for the town.
Well, I'm worried that the boat ramp in its present condition is insurance liability for the town. And we gotta show some, uh, uh, initiative that we're gonna fix the problem if we get sued by anybody. And if, you know, I put ten thousand in there for Christ's sake. We're gonna raise the money eventually. Let's get it, let's get this going. That's what a capital reserve program is for. I, I won't say.
I, I don't believe Christ is voting in this, in this meeting.
Anybody wanna make a motion to add money to it or leave it as is?
Someone wanna make a motion? I'll make a motion then. Let's, uh, add ten grand to it or something like that. Let's not, let's not leave it blank.
Oh, five.
Okay.
I have a motion to put in five thousand dollars for the boat ramp. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second for five.
All those in favor?
Aye. Lynette, aye.
Joe, aye.
Larry Brown, aye.
Bob Graham, aye.
Brian Moore is aye.
I think there's a question, isn't there?
And you can see that I've added that back. Okay.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, the next is town administrator, Ernie. You said Julius is gonna handle this? Yes, I did. And it's right here. It's line forty-five right here on the spreadsheet. Uh, I've already added the amount that I think they talked about asking for. Uh, you know, in the past, they've asked for, uh, six thousand or eight thousand, uh, you know, traditionally through the years. Uh, in, uh, in twenty twenty, uh, they only asked for twenty-five hundred and it actually passed the warrant. Uh, I think you're gonna hear from Julius in a second about why, uh, they feel that this is the amount of money that should be asked for this year.
Yeah, and so, uh, I, I got to talk to Ernie quite a bit, um, between today and yesterday. And what he really noted to me was that was an unanticipated.
Into the microphone.
I'm sorry if I'm a little far away. Um, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. So, pretty much what he had explained to me is because of some unanticipated revenue that he received, or that the town has received from the state. Uh, the town office was really able to upgrade a lot of technology that, uh, previous years we had been allocating for. And so being able to use that unanticipated revenue to catch up on some of these expenditures. Uh, putting a smaller amount aside now and continuing a smaller incremental, uh, increase will allow the town in the future to keep up with technology. Uh, rather than doing, you know, long spans of nothing and then just buying it all at once.
Doing catches, right?
Yeah. Ernie did say that he understands that there is, you know, uh, there is a crunch for, uh, how much we wanna put into all the accounts. And he says he understands if we need to zero it out. Uh, but he would, this is the number that we've kind of agreed on as, um, this is the base minimum of what we think we can work with and would be good for us in the future, but. But that was kind of what he explained to me.
Thanks Julius. What happened with that?
I'm sorry, would you say Brian?
Is everybody happy with that explanation or do they feel we should add money, leave it?
I think it, I think if he's happy with that and utilizing the money that he had previously, he's good with that. I think he's done his research. Uh I'm good with his number.
I agree.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Yep. Uh yeah, from what I have seen coming in and out of the office, uh Ernie has been very cautious, very uh frugal, uh and very inventive uh in trying to reduce and maintain uh the services that the town offers.
I think another point that I could add to that as well is that Ernie also wanted to really note that worse comes to worse. Say there is a second wave uh of COVID, we still wanna have enough money in there to respond in case. Um and so having, it's a fallback plan for the future if necessary. But it's also not so preemptive that uh we're setting so much aside that it's not essential. So that's another key point to uh throw in there.
Okay.
All right. We've covered the two issues on the capital reserve and we're into other business.
Before you go there, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna uh let the board know two things. Uh one, that uh at your next meeting, whether it's remote or whether it's physical, uh I will invite someone from the uh, the Milton Three Ponds Association to come and talk about their, their request, which as you know, for this year, and I'm circling this. This year their request was $20,000 uh for the eradication of the European NIAID in Milton Three Ponds. Um last year, uh and, and in 2019, the voters approved 10,000. So I think one of the things that the board probably needs to hear from someone is what's the balance in your account right now? Have you spent all the money and what do you think you need reasonably given, you know, the COVID-19 reduction in uh, in budget revenues? You previously, at a previous meeting, and I'm again, I'm taking my curse and I'm going around this. You settled on the, the amount of five grand. But you probably need to hear from uh the TPPA on this. Uh and I will, I will ask them to either uh come physically or remotely, one way or the other. Their, their request remains 20,000 off the, off the end of the planning period, as you can see in red. So that's something that you probably should listen to and then make a final decision on. Uh the second thing uh I wanted to talk about is uh whether or not you wanted to have any, okay. It might be three things. So the second thing really is that I sent the board members the uh, let's see if we can find it here, the pub, right here on line 44. Public Safety Communication Capital Reserve Fund Radio Replacement Project. And, and although they're not, they're not asking for, they're not asking for any money in the capital year coming up, right here. They're, they are asking for $30,000 for several years, each year after that. Project. The question I had is, do you want to speak uh with the fire chief, police chief and DPW director about this project that they're all signing onto or not? I mean, you could tackle it next year.
30,000 is a good chunk of change.
Yeah, the, as you know, it's, it's meant to be a complete system of radios, transmitting and receiving equipment uh for all three departments. So if you looked at the project forms that were sent to you, uh you'll see that it's the, it's the whole enchilada.
Yep.
So the board, I think, probably needs to at least discuss that. It doesn't affect you for the capital year because they're not asking for any money. So you could wait, but, but again, what, my end goal is to solicit your, your consensus ideas and bullet points so that we can get that uh, we can get that report to the selectmen.
I wanna go back to that European NIAID. I think we should change it from eradication to control because we can't seem to eradicate it no matter how much money we're throwing at it.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, I understand that. That's what they called it. We can ask them to do it when he comes in.
Yeah, because we don't seem to ever eradicate it.
That would make more sense too. I'm sorry.
The, the word would be extirpation.
Extirpation, yeah.
Thank you Bruce.
I've got one other thing on the, on the other business. The uh downtown next to Cumberland Farms, 565 White Mountain Highway. Uh the 29th of this month, we're gonna have full control of it. And Ernie'd asked me to bring before the board what they might like us to see to do with that property. I mean, there's options. They could take 10 to, you could tear it down. You get a parking lot in, a whole 10, 5, 15 to 18 cars. There's a number of options. If you got, people have any ideas, you know, let's talk, we'll put it out to Ernie at the end of the month. Try to get to the board.
Sell it and get rid of it.
No, no, turn it into a parking lot. We need a parking lot down there and the land above it, we could turn into some kind of park.
Right, we need it, we need a parking lot, but at the same time, who's gonna foot the bill to tear it down and build a parking lot?
Sell it to Cumberland Farms.
Absolutely. Cumberland Farms doesn't want it.
Well, offer a price.
They don't want it.
Yeah, uh and, and so I'm pretty sure that select board has uh explored options with the, the butters on either side. Yes, Matt?
Yeah.
I've, I've, I've spoken directly with the uh regional manager for Cumberland Farms for our region. And Cumberland Farms does not want that property.
And the other side is Walter Chee.
Walter probably wants it for nothing. No one Walter. Nothing against Walter, but we all know he probably wants it for nothing. I mean, yeah, and we, we definitely, we definitely need parking downtown, but again, it's, it's who's gonna foot the bill for it. Cause the town of Milton can't afford it. We have a hard enough time affording everything we have going on right now.
That's a good, that's a good thought.
Mr. Chairman.
It would be, it would be on the town. Uh if the town moved forward with retaining the property for public purposes. Uh the, you know, the town could do that. Uh that doesn't cost money, but what costs money obviously is the demolition of the premises. Uh and then the construction of, of both parking and, and a park. So it would be a capital project if that's what you move forward with. Now, the, the thing that the board could think about, and this is just an idea for you to bandy about, is that y, y, yes, something probably has to happen right away. Uh and if you can't get grants, uh the, the thing to do is to incrementally put away money uh for a number of years into a capital reserve fund that would ultimately get you to doing that project. So that's something to think about.
And we could always charge for the parking if we were to go to a parking. We could always charge for parking. And that would be some kind of source coming in too.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brown.
Do I understand that the town owns uh a, a parcel on the, on the, on the goat slope uh behind 565?
I believe so, yes.
Do you happen to know the size of that parcel?
I do not, sir.
That um, it is a steep slope parcel, probably at uh, at 20 to 25% grade. Uh and not useful for development uh unless there were extraordinary uh measures uh taken with sheer walls and the, and the rest. Um what is this, what is the, the footprint size of, of that parcel? Do we know? Just the parcel that the house is, let us say nominal quarter acre?
Yeah.
So uh if you, if you assign, uh do we have any comparable sales for what uh property has sold for uh in the village? That would be one assessment. Uh well, for the, for the bear, for the bear lot, uh we don't know the cost of, of demolition. And we don't know the value of having access to the ridge or at least maintaining a right of, a right of way which could be uh negotiable uh for a future development when zoning changes. Uh and the town uh can sell off uh the high-rise condominiums with the, with the elevator and the cellar uh just like was planned for Bollin Road, uh certain Northeast Pond Road. Uh that would seem to be most useful to put money away to either under just municipal uh parks and a recs, a general fund. Uh or just municipal purposes so that it was a seed, uh seed money for exactly that type of demolition costs to improve uh the, the downtown. Uh Cumberland uh may not want it uh because Cumberland is probably assessing the viability of their own operation uh given the gas and go at exit 17, which is poised to pull business out of the downtown. But, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, sir. Any more of the comments on this project or think about it and throw them out? It's that, selectmen would like to know, so would Ernie, and I was asked to bring this up tonight.
Thank you.
Bruce, you got any comments?
Well, again, I, I just, I just think that at some point uh the board probably should have received some kind of a, a project form submission about this, just so that you can have something concrete that you can discuss. I mean, right now, right now, there, there isn't any and, and we've gone beyond, we've gone beyond the, the deadline that we set for submissions to come in, but this, this might be a special case. Uh that's up to you. Uh I'm gonna segue down to where the school is and tell you that uh, where are we here? That you, you see that uh, right here where it says in line 80, 2021 purchase pickup with plow. I have added, uh until you tell me to take it off, no indication from school that this is valid. And I have taken the 40,000 and put a zero in there. Which is what I am assuming would be the board's recommendation absent a submission or even an email that says, hey, we're moving forward with that. It's been in the plan since back here, but we did tell them, tell us if there are any changes. Tell us if you're moving forward with the same projects into 2021 that you had in there in 2020, 2019. And we get no answer from them, even though I've spoken with some of the school board uh folks in person. And so uh it's up to you. This is an issue. This is an issue about submission deadlines. We didn't have a submission deadline last year. We just let it go on and on and on until December. And so to get, to get a report done in time for the September deadline, you have to have a deadline for submissions. That's kinda what I'm saying. I don't mean to talk too much, but.
I'm happy with that. I'm very happy with that result. There's consequences.
The board should look at all of the things that we've just decided. That's number one. You should have a, an overarching discussion about this whole plan. Gets you right here to this number, 404, 482, which is lower than any year previous, with the exception of last year when many of the warrants failed. So here you are. Is that a 10% reduction from here? I think so. And then secondly, you have to tell me whether I should keep trying to get somebody from the school to come or whether it's over.
I would say it's over.
Yep.
I talked with the uh head of maintenance today. And we were discussing some of this and he looked at my little, my little escape town car. Wanted to know if we could take a plow. So I don't think he expects a new pickup.
Right, and that's, and that's what I've done. And the board can tell me that this is okay to stay this way uh for your recommendation.
How's the board feel about that?
I'm fine with it.
Agree.
You're good Bruce.
Okay. So as you know, next, next time, uh I'm gonna invite one or two more people here and then, and then we'll be done with listening uh to explanations from uh board and TPPA people. I mean, department heads and TPPA people. Uh I will uh put together, uh with Julius's help, the, the Form Ds, which are your rating sheets. Uh and uh hopefully we'll be able to meet physically uh and everybody will be able to do that. Uh I know that the chair has wanted that and I think that he'll, he'll talk to you about that in a moment. But whether it's remote or physical, uh I will make sure that you have uh Form Ds uh to work from uh on all these 21, 2021 projects. Uh not necessarily the ones that go into the planning years. Uh and uh your report can talk about the planning years too, by the way, but we're going to rate and then rank these so that you'll know which ones are the most important capital projects to fund and, and to pass that along in your report.
Thank you.
That's our next step.
Yep. And I think I would, I myself would like to have be a physical meeting at the town hall, the next meeting. And do I have agreement?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine.
Yes, I agree.
This is great for now. I mean, this, this worked great for the situation we're in. But we've got it all set up there now. It could be all on YouTube. And we can, we can meet the requirements for distincts and, so I, I think we, we should at least give it a shot.
Yeah, Matt, we gonna wear masks?
Town hall says, when you're meeting public, yes. I'm not gonna come up, I haven't got any, I'm not gonna, I'll provide masks there. It's up to you to wear them. Set an example.
Uh yes, I, I'm all in favor of masks. Uh many have recommended a thicker material for my own.
Want to muffle you?
I want to make.
Full face?
Just kidding, Larry.
I've got a bag. I could just put over your bag.
The next thing I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn. Allen?
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
I, I, I.
Roll call. Thank you Bruce.
Larry Brown, aye, over and out.
Bob Graham, aye.
Thank you.
The next one, do I?
I keep forgetting that roll call.
Amish, you aye.
Oh, this is the last.
Next meeting will definitely be at town hall.
Okay.
Aye.
That's great.
I think we might work better as a group.
Before you go Julius, uh I will get with you uh to make sure that you have Form Ds. Now, the number of Form Ds uh that have to be made out for every 2021 project is the number of planning board members. So in other words, for project A at the top of the list, in 2021, you'll have to do seven or eight Form Ds with, with that project name at the top. So that each board member gets one and that each one of them will rate uh, will rate the uh project based on the criteria that's on the Form D.
Is this the Form D? Look at this. I'm sorry, can you see it?
Uh that looks like a C to me.
A C, okay.
Yeah. Uh the Form D is the one that has the different criteria. It'd be 10 different criteria and then there's a scale uh on there. Uh and it's, it's. And it's, it's all up to each board member. So I know, I know we've adjourned, but I just want you to understand
All right.
how this works and some of you have done it in the past and some of you have not.
One other thing, the Warren article is going back on for the point of selectmen to appoint a CIP committee for next year.
Thank you.
Let's get back to planning and not CIP.
One comment on that is that I work in Maltborough as their town planner. And at the same time, right now, the capital improvements program committee, not the planning board, is moving through the process at a faster clip than we are. It's not the fault of the planning board. But the planning board has other duties. They have other things to review and approve. And it's, it's a much better construct to have a capital improvements program committee made up of people that are disparate in what they do. In other words, there's people that do financial stuff. There's people that do planning stuff. There might be two members of the planning board on the committee. There, there's a member of the finance department that's on there. And, and so you get a, you've got a, a wider range of expertise to figure out what to do. And it, it really works out a lot better. Unfortunately, no matter what, the planner is still the one that does this.
If the mic is still on, Julius, thank you for your own work. Into the microphone. The older ear appreciates it.
I'm sorry, I, I remember.
Oh, my gosh. He has no right to say that. We can't ever hear him at meetings. He has no right to say that.
All right, everybody, I'm going to turn off the recording now and, and then I'm going to stop the meeting. So have a great night.
You too, guys.